At the board offices, we talked about they have an education foundation. As Mr. Hanky said, many schools do have an education foundation. It's analogous to a university or college endowment. Where the goal is to help students and others do the gathering of resources and money. We are at the infancy of what we are called. So, while teachers like me didn't talk about it, and so we're going to work at it. Tonight, I can tell everybody here that we have been recognized by the IRS as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. Okay, so that's, that's, that's a great thing that we have. I think a couple of days after I consented two years ago, at William Foster in the back, Snowy Day coming in, and Mrs. Daniels was dropping her children off, and she rolled her window down and took the time to say, "Thanks for coming." And she said, "I hope we get this going." So I talked to the board, and I finally started remembering that in the back parking lot on a cold morning, about a week after the presentation a year or two ago, and she was very supportive. So, tonight, I'm just going to share a little bit more of what this is all about. Before we continue though, it, it has to be said, I want to thank Mr. Hanky a great deal. From the first discussions of this idea, which are new, new here, but it's no longer new here, we are going to flourish. Mr. Hanky was always very supportive. He always had time, and I wanted to ask him a question. He always had ideas, he always was very supportive. And especially through the last eighteen months and two years with COVID going on and so many things. He has not changed and diminished enthusiasm for the foundation. The foundation is basically all about kids, right, our students here. He was always interested at the time, no matter what was on his plate, to talk about the foundation. Because I know him pretty well, he is passionate about making a difference for students. So I wanted to recognize him, we are always activities, he always had time to make, thank you. As I said, we are a 501(c)(3) organization. And we're up and active. What is going on now? The focus of the foundation is to help three groups of people. It's to help students, our staff, and our community. Unlike other foundations, which generally focus on students, which we do, and some teacher activities, we are going to focus also on our community. And those are in our bylaws. To get the foundation going, it required really a lot of work by people who were smarter than me. Mr. Hanky was very helpful, he gave us an attorney with a law from Walter Natterfield that serves the board. Her name was Megan Dewing in Columbus. She took time helping me through mounds of paper about an attorney. We had to get things submitted to the House Secretary of State and approved. Then we had to get things submitted to the IRS, I'm not a CPA. So we had to work with a CPA, we've known many a lot of lawyers, the name's Chris Anderson, CPA from the downtown booth. But I wanted to recognize these people. So, the foundation is focused on students, staff, and community. What are we going to do for students? We're going to try and help them as much as we can with scholarships, enrichment programs. And I'm happy to report tonight that we wanted to get something going this academic year. Leanne Reiser is gracious to chair of committee where we are going to offer two to three scholarships to graduating seniors this year. We will keep that activity going every year. So, the foundation this year will offer two to three scholarships to graduating seniors. I'm sure she'll work with this hand, we'll all work together to identify students and selection criteria. So we're going to start reviewing scholarships out every year. Secondly, we also want to help students, perhaps with some summer enrichment activities as we get more recent. But we are going to start helping students with scholarships. The second thing is staff. We want to call it in the future what we call mini-grants. Might be five hundred dollars to a thousand dollars. For a teacher, write a proposal, you want this money to do something innovative as they teach the state content standards, which is what, is what we teach every day in school. So we're going to offer a few mini-grants. And lastly, we're going to offer something to the community. One of the eight board directors is Gina Wilson, who is here. Gina is passionate about helping the community. She's going to organize an activity next year to help the community, that the foundation's going to help. Again, these are early information, we don't have the details. But again, I'd like to leave with even our bylaws, help students of all ages, not just high school. Help staff, help our community. Those are our three focuses. What's going on now? We are in the middle of our very first campaign to give donations. We started this, we didn't have any money in the bank. We haven't, now we have PNC, or, um, got PNC, any character like that, but we're going to have a problem. Negative helm. We had no money, we had to start somewhere. Every year we attended, perhaps have a month, was a capital campaign we asked for foundations. We know that isn't enough, there will be other fundraising activities we will do that we will be announcing. But we are accepting donations now. Donations of any amount, five dollars, ten dollars, twenty dollars, fifty dollars, are gladly accepted. Our goal by March fifteenth is to have five thousand dollars. If we could give the five thousand dollars, there is an anonymous donor who pledged a five thousand dollar matching grant or a check. So if we gave five thousand by March fifteenth, we automatically jump to ten thousand dollars by March fifteenth. So, if anybody that's willing to give five, ten, twenty dollars, we will take it. How can you make that donation? You can make the donation, you can use a check, you can argue by application of the foundation. Jean Rizzi has the authority to be the treasurer of the foundation, editor-at-need. When you write that donation, you will get a one-page document from the foundation as required by the IRS to document your donation, you may be able to do this at places, you'll have to talk to the taxidermist. The IRS requires that, that will be received. So if you're going to do a check, do it to Jean Rizzi, and you're going to, you know, let the document go. If you do cash, tell her how much, she'll send it over to the receipt. We are working on a online device right now, taking a little time for bringing it reasons, but we promise to have it online, uh, digital format, because you know lots of people use. So right now, it's donations to check or cash. Again, if we did five thousand by March fifteenth, we have the promise of a five thousand dollar matching grant for this donor. So if you're twenty or fifty or five or fifteen, you turn it to an additional five thousand, so where did that come from? Where are we going? We will continue to do these scholarships to the seniors next year. We'll expand through activities for other students. We're going to give it to staff mini-grants, or maybe something for the community. I want to recognize eight directors of the foundation who have given a lot of time over many, many months. In addition to myself, we have Leanne Reiser, Amanda Sizzler, Jean Rizzi, Jill Frenel, Dominic Clavie, David Cholero, and Gina Wilson. Uh, Dominic Clavie is graduate at Barfield Heights High School. But he went to Ohio State and University of Texas with an MBA. David Cholero used to be a teacher, he's at Heights. He was very talented about wanting to stand for the foundation. Um, so we want to thank those people. I also want to thank Al Sudo. In addition to the donations that we're accepting, Al and his office are making available to all of our staff members if they are interested in donating through payroll deductions, voluntary payroll deductions. The denominations are three dollars, five dollars, ten dollars, or other. So if anybody here is an employee of the district, or you did a paycheck, if you consider even a three dollar or five dollar donation through payroll deduction, then we give the foundation some revenue coming in every month, which will help us again to get as much resources as we can. So thank you to Al for your help on that. Lastly, I want to close, as I do many of our meetings with the foundation, and think we put out by saying this. Many of us are bullwels, right, and we have done bullwells. And I'm reminded of a saying I heard, and I think it's applicable to all of us here right now. He no longer is alive, but U.S. Representative John Lewis from Georgia. The man who said, "There's good trouble, we need to talk to others." He had another saying, that I want to leave you with tonight, with the foundation. "If not us, then who? If not now, then when?" Again, "If not us, then who? If we keep this thing going with the kids, the foundation is one of the things. And then, if not now, then..." So thank you, the board, Mr. Hanky must be prepared, next year we have an update, I certainly will. And again, I hate to sound, but we are accepting donations. And we're going to try to get five thousand by March fifteenth, and our allowance is five thousand dollars. So a check to Jean Rizzi. Uh, also, her assistant principal, Polly Strickland, is the one that is handling the paperwork. So we have her to talk to the IRS. She will be giving the letters out, the documented donation. So we have a lot of help funds, so now we need revenue. And it doesn't matter how small, we will take it if we want to get an emergency grant. And then next year, we have some ideas to give away. Any questions, Brian? Thank you for your time, I hope I didn't ramble on the previous plot twists, and, um, let's get started.
Thank you for, um, your presentation. And I just would like to thank, um, you, Mr. Lutenski, and the other directors that have taken out your time and dedication to ensure that we have this foundation in our district, for not just our current students, but for the future of the Barfield High City School District. So, I do appreciate your hard work, your dedication, and your continued commitment to this foundation. Get it on the ground. Totally delighted today to hear your, um, presentation. So thank you again, and thank you to everyone who has participated in ensuring that our community, our students, and our staff have access to more resources. Thank you. And everybody, don't forget to donate.
Thank you, President Davis, I'd like to introduce, uh, this is Frenel, Mr. Glazer. Thank you again for hosting us here at William Foster.
All right, well, as, um, Mr. Hanky had said, thank you. My name is Jill Frenel, I am the proud principal here at William Foster. Um, I've been in the district now for twenty-three years. Spent my first seventeen years teaching at Napoli. I'm assistant principal here for three, and second year as the principal. On the evening, I have Mr. Glazer, who is my assistant principal. Here, he also has a long history on being at Barfield. So thank you for, um, joining us, our family, we appreciate that. Community members, as well as, um, principals and other community members. So, as you know, today is two-two-twenty-two. So at William Foster, we like to have a little bit of fun. Um, and so today was our day all about our second graders. Um, you know, we kept telling the kids over and over again, "Today is about you." So at this time, if I can please call up my second grade teacher teams, as well as we have, um, some of our students here that would like to share something really meaningful. And second graders, if you would like to come on up as well, please do not try to come over.
Good evening, everybody. Um, we brought a few of our buddies along with us today to share what their life might be like, um, in twenty-two years. So I'm going to introduce my first one, which is Kendall Castle, who is going to read to you what she thinks her life will be like.
In twenty-two years, I'll be twenty-nine years old. I'll be a tall woman, I will have long brains and hair. I will be beautiful, I will love my family. I will, my job will be a doctor for dentists. I will have kids and a husband and a, and a dog. I will have a big house. I will have a mansion. I will get my hobby be getting my nails done and traveling. I will travel to Texas and Chicago. And Atlanta, I can't wait.
All right, so our next second grader is Jackson Velasco, who's going to read, um, his writing about in twenty-two years.
When I am twenty-nine, I want to own an R.C. car park and play around. I will have two kids, I help their children. I will play basketball, play video games, I will play Roblox. I will have a normal house with three floors, four bathrooms, three bedrooms, an underground pool, and a basketball court.
So we also have some, um, second grade friends that we're not going to read, but they wanted to represent their second grade class this evening. Um, so we are very excited to all stand. Would you like to name it? Do you want to tell them what your life will be like in twenty-two years? Are you guys shy? All right, we won't put you on this mic. But thank you, um, and today we had a lot of fun, so it was a great day for second grade years on two-two-twenty-two. And as you can see, the teacher ordered two-twos. And they're all going towards that. So, thank you boys and girls for having a good day with us. And teachers, thanks for making it a lot of fun, so we appreciate you. And, um, we have, this is the day we did the public things we did today to celebrate the fun. Um, and so they had glow paint, um, and they did two-syllable word puzzles. Um, and they did, um, a blow party at two-twenty-two. Um, we also, um, did, they built cow cow words. Um, and they used their tantrums, steam bubble, and, let me see what else. Oh, and they also did a two-tools stem challenge. And they were also visiting us by some of the remarkable things today. Um, and then a couple of classrooms, you can go ahead and switch it, Miss Barry. Um, they did some parent reading. Um, and then they also did something cute where they had parents send in a picture of what their child looks like at the age of two. And the kids did a little activity, um, and you'll see, um, the kids had a match up who they thought that was at the age of two. So, those were the kids, I think, that's what I'm getting. So very good. All right, so thank you, second graders, um, we appreciate you as well as teachers. So now I will get off on my presentation. Um, so welcome to William Foster, as we had said. Um, William Foster houses preschool as well as, um, for fifth grade. So right now, our current enrollment is five hundred and forty-two students. Um, and as you can see, that's how many students we have in each grade level. Okay. So the driving force behind our success. Um, the Board of Education, as well as many stakeholders, came together in two thousand and twenty-one and created our strategic plan. So when we met with our staff, um, at the beginning of the year, we said, "Anything we do has to fit into the strategic plan." Um, so since the plan was so well-written, it's really made our jobs a lot easier. Um, you know, so we use a strategic plan with any decision we make. We use data upon data upon data. Um, assessment data, behavior data, attendance data, report card data, anything we make, any decisions we make, it has data behind it. Um, this year, we've implemented OTEST two-point-oh, that is our evaluation system for our teaching staff. Um, we've also been implementing PBIS as well as PACS, and those are our behavior support programs we have in place. We've been incentivizing attendance for our new initiative with a clip of Brown, it's called Stay in the Game. Um, and we've also been having a strong focus on meeting the SBL needs of our students. And we're constantly using benchmark data. I know Mrs. Daniels talked about benchmarking season. Um, we benchmark three times a year across the district. Um, and we use MAPs occasionally, and we have a new tool we're going to talk to you tonight about, which is called the DESSA, and that is helpful with our social emotional needs. So why do we think focusing on social emotional is important? Well, because we all know, everyone sitting in this room, that there's a strong focus on the correlation between social emotional skills as well as academic success for students. All right, so we have our portrait of a graduate who come out of the hallway, right here, we have our big poster. And again, strategic plan, portrait of a graduate, is at the forefront of everything we do. Um, within our portrait of graduate, we have four areas of focus. Of putting our students with real world skills, having students be career prepared, becoming a leader, and being socially and emotionally aware. So being socially and emotionally aware has to start when the children are little. Um, and that is what a big focus and a strong focus that we have here. So how do we help our students become socially and emotionally aware? Well, we promote our PBIS incentives, um, we implement PACS, as we said. We target time daily for social emotional learning. Um, social emotional learning is just as important as our math, our reading, our science, our social studies. Anything we do, we have a strong focus behind that. Um, our school guidance counselor, she teaches monthly lessons within the classroom based on different themes. Um, and we also promote our multi-tier support system. And we provide students the supports they need at that time. Um, and then we also have a strong focus on working with our families, as well as our outside counseling agencies, to give the kids some of the supports that they may not be able to get just from their daily classroom interactions. Um, so this year, we took upon administering, administering something called the DESSA Mini to all students in kindergarten through eighth grade. So when we did the DESSA Mini, um, every student in K through A in Barfield Heights administered this assessment. It was eight questions, and the teachers completed it about every student they had in front of them. Um, the students had to be in the classroom for at least four weeks. Um, and it was a simple eight-question assessment that the teachers had completed on each of the students. What had happened is after the teachers answered the questions, it gave us a score. And with that score, it told us where our students are with their social, emotional awareness, and maybe some strategies that we may need to work on. Um, so what will happen is after we did the DESSA Mini, I will share with you in a few minutes the results. But we will have some students that may need some more rigor supports, as well as we need to dig deeper to see exactly what that child may need to be successful. Um, and then this data will be used also to strengthen our tier-one instruction. And so basically, our tier-one instruction is what every student gets every day while they're here. Because remember, we keep, tier-one, we focus on social emotional learning every single day. Um, and then we have some students who will definitely benefit from some small group, as well as maybe some individualized, um, help. So that is super duper light, so I'm going to, um, go ahead and let me kind of tell you where we are. And I apologize, our lights in here are all or nothing, so you would not want the nothing. So, um, our students, we administered the DESSA to students in grades K through A. I'm sorry, K through, got it, um, in here? And, so how did William Foster students look overall? So within the DESSA, we had ninety-six students, which is twenty-one percent of our population, that showed that they had strengths in social emotional awareness. Now, again, I believe in that strength, and why so many students are showing that, is because this is not the new. Um, across the district, we've been focusing on SBL for quite some time. So the good news is, we have about twenty-one percent of our students who have very strong who have very strong skills and a very strong socially and emotional confidence. Then we had two-hundred-and-fifty students, which is fifty-five percent of our students, who fell into the typical range. Meaning these students, they got some skills of social emotional, but they also have some things that we may need to work in. Nothing alarming, but still is something that we need to consider. However, we did, with our results, we did have a hundred and five students, which was twenty-three percent of our students showing that they have a need and they may need some further support with their social and emotional learning. So what does that mean for us? Well, that means we're doing a good job and we do have kids that have strengths. We have a nice solid foundation of kids that are falling into typical. But we also have some challenges because we have twenty-three percent of our students that still need some more further support. So how do we provide those supports is our challenge. With that being said, real quick, this is how our grade levels work out. So if you look, tier-one means that the students fell into the strength or typical. Tier-two would be our students that need some additional support. So if you look here, as our students get up into the upper ages, we're starting to see that, okay, our grades three, four, five, they need a little bit more work. But we'll get on that because remember, we're trying to keep the strategic plan in place. We're looking at portrait of a graduate. What does that tell us? What does that tell our middle school friends? Okay, so what are we going to do next? So the first thing we're going to do is we're going to take our information that we gather and we're going to use it to strengthen our tier-one instruction. So we'll be meeting with our teachers to look at this and say, okay, what are the differences between D and E and F and S? How do you use support these skills while teaching that, creating science and social studies? This is Gray, my school guidance counselor. She's already started forming small groups. She's going to start working with the K-two students with the tier-two. And then after she completes around with that group, she's going to go ahead and she's going to move on to grade three or five. We're going to continue working with our families as well as with the help of Ms. Wilson and Ms. Gray with getting our kids some outside counseling supports at eight. This year alone, we are well into, and I put forty, and I did this over the weekend, and I got two referrals today, of students that are going to be working with an outside counselor. We really created and developed a culture with our families that getting counseling support for students at a young age is not a bad thing. We're going to put them with the skills that they need so they can be successful. We've also, with the help of Dr. Free's office, we have more than just one agency we bring into the district and into the buildings. You know, and again, just that we can go to the doctor. Some people like their doctor, it's a good fit. We like to offer a variety based on what the kids need. Heart-to-heart is one of our newer agencies we started working with. They're in the building three times a week, so their pace is definitely growing. As well as Ohio Geists, they're present in our building three days a week. We have a partnership with H Brook, Applewood, Everwell, as well as Nancy Lowry. And we will continue to refer our students based on the needs that they would have. Also too, as I said, we do our daily S B L instruction. And I don't know what that sounds like to me, honest with you. We'll continue to work with A D A therapy as well to conduct some further assessments on some of our students that may need, who may need a little bit more support to help them be successful in the classroom. They'll come in and they'll do functional behavior assessments on the kids and give us some really good guidelines as to how we can be supportive of students. And this is just looking at where we were prior to COVID and where we are today. I know that, you know, in education, we're kind of stuck in this wall because of COVID, because of COVID, because of COVID. But we need to take COVID out of the equation sometimes. And we were looking at our student referrals, so the behavior referrals. And what this slide is showing, and I shared it with Mr. Peck earlier this evening, is in twenty-nineteen and twenty-twenty, it wasn't until March that we sent the kids home, you know, because the pandemic had hit. So our lives were pretty much normal from August until, say, March thirteenth, I believe, was about a month ago. But if we compare it to data from twenty-nineteen to twenty-one, twenty-two, our students are really doing a good job and our referrals are down. So as we know, there's a strong correlation with behavior versus academics. And as you can see, our daily referrals definitely, you know, aren't decreasing from where they are. So that leads to all of our focus and our attention on P D I S and, you know, PACs and focusing and getting our kids linked up with counseling. Daily S B L, it is working. It's just going to take some time. But I felt that that was just going to say that we're much better off behavior-wise than when we were prior to COVID based off of our opposite values. And as we said, we, you know, try to keep with the district initiative and, you know, moving forward together is our theme. And we tell the kids that every time we do our morning announcements, we're moving forward together. And this is just another example of William Foster having fun. So we see on social media, we're doing some crazy things. That's okay, we want our kids to have fun. This was Mr. Glazer and Mr. Gattin's student note. We let the kids go ahead, you know, they did sled riding in January. And we used our hillback chair. Parents did a nice job sending you snow clothes and sleds and the kids had a great time. And believe it or not, we had some children that have never played in the snow. So they thought it was awesome. So again, you know, we appreciate our families, our staff, Board of Education for supporting us, having faith in us. And we will also, you know, continue to move forward together. So that concludes my question.
Thank you. Another question for Ms. Frimmo's report and presentation this evening from the board. Madam Chair, I have a couple of questions this evening. Ms. Frimmo, thank you very much for the presentation. You're very inviting. If it starts to be DESA, the data that you, that you shared with us, such as the DESA committee?
Yes.
Is there a, is there a plan to do the full DESA or specifically the twenty-three percent that it showed as there was a need? And is that, is that, is that what is going to drive the F B As? And what is our timeframe with the creation, the winding of DESA, so DESA?
So that's a great question. And I actually asked my school psychologist the same question as well. Because we worked on looking at the data. So what happens is in the data, we have a need and then there's a urgent. The good news is that none of our students, that twenty-three percent, did not fall into the urgent. So what will happen is now that we just recently administered that, we're going to start looking at individual students and figuring out where they are. And then that would be a next layer where we'd have their teachers complete the DESA, the full DESA, which is like seventy-two questions, eight minutes per kid, to figure out exactly what we need. So that is coming. But it is, you know, we're just not there yet. But I am hopeful that within probably the next month or so, we're going to start digging into that and figuring out where are we with that and what are we going to do with that information. The F B A, so right now, that could probably be a step as to help support, you know, getting the F B As in some of our ghettos here. So I believe too that that could tie in nicely with that. We're just not there yet, but I think eventually that is most likely the step that we're going to be taking. No, you're welcome.
So I would like to thank you and casual Board of Education, Ms. Frimmo, for your presentation. I must say that William Foster has a little special part in my heart because this is the school that my family is introduced to Garfield High City School District. And this is the school that we came to initially and they follow up with Garfield High City School District and make a commitment to have my children educated through Garfield High City School District. So this school in particular has been very instrumental to the growth and development of my children. And a lot of times we see, we don't see the outcomes of elementary school until they're in high school. But all of my children have stepped down off of their educational plans thanks to the foundation that they've gotten here at William Foster Elementary. So I would like to thank you guys for your hard work and dedication to all students. I get an opportunity as a stakeholder to see the impact that this school district has on students on the elementary level. And I appreciate the hard work of you as principals and the staff, our students, and our family, and most definitely takes a community to see our students thrive. So thank you, Ms. Frimmo, for your report this evening and your presentation. And thank you, William Foster Elementary, for your hard work and dedication to all students.
Thank you.
At this time, I'm part just going to the superintendent's report. If our families would like to be dismissed, they are welcome to. As you can see, and we thank you guys for your participation this evening. And thank you to our second graders for your amazing rendition on where you're going to be at in twenty-two years. And I'm striving for a normal house like Jackson's. Thank you, Ms. Frimmo, for bringing the students out.
Mr. Reed, your report?
Yes, President Daniels. I did have a late addition in a public district as part of the report. We did produce a video as part of our true Garfield community. Mr. Fertz was able to complete that in time to show here at the board meeting. So it's not a long video, but it really is well-done. I think it highlights a lot of aspects of the district. So this is really good.
Hello Bulldogs. The last several years have been difficult. But Garfield High City Schools has risen above the challenge. There have been many occasions where the Garfield High City Schools has demonstrated why our district is among the finest places for students to receive a quality education from the best staff. Reflecting on these amazing accomplishments should remind us of the teamwork and collaboration required to make all that we have achieved possible. We thank the Board of Education for their guidance and support, our dedicated staff for their devotion to seeing our students achieve, our parents for their flexibility, and our students will be tomorrow's leaders. Our mission encourages us that as the heart of the community, Garfield High City Schools fully prepares students to pursue their dreams and give back as engaged citizens and future leaders. Let's reflect on all that's been accomplished. To successfully plan for the future, we've created a new strategic plan with new vision, mission, and belief statements. Created the Garfield High City Schools graduate profile as a streamlined path forward for all of our students. To demonstrate our successful student experiences, the Garfield High City Schools has initiated the first-ever district-wide summer camp program, created the Little Bulldogs Kindergarten Registration Program, and the Prepare for Kindergarten Summer Program. William Foster earned a silver medal from the state of Ohio, and the high school, middle school, Elmwood, and Maple Leaf earned bronze medals for their positive behavior, interventions, and supports. In showing our commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion, the district has welcomed the first African-American Board of Education members. We have also implemented the creation of the Garfield High City Schools District Equity Statement, the creation of the Diversity Equity Inclusion Program, which culminated with the celebration of D E I Week and Black History Month programming, partnering with organizations such as the National Association of Black Storytellers. We were also awarded four-hundred-and-four-thousand dollars from the U.S. Department of Education for the recruitment, retention, and promotion of teachers of color. To show strides in technology, communication, and collaboration, the Garfield High City Schools has gone one-hundred percent remote when needed, providing every student with a Chromebook at a moment's notice, and then transitioned all students back into the classrooms with the health and safety of the students prioritized. We began live-streaming the Board of Education meetings, created the Bulldog Digital Academy as an extension of our buildings during the early stages of the pandemic, begun virtual town hall meetings to keep families updated, including connecting our families with outside resources such as mental health providers, instituted the Student Recovery Communications Outreach for our friends in the community schools and EdChoice, begun and continued the practice of regularly surveying our parents and community for feedback regarding school matters, continued publishing the Garfield High City School Quality Profile, created the Family Engagement Committee. The district also revived the State of the Schools presentation to enhance community engagement and awareness about important school topics. To successfully address the global pandemic, the Garfield High City Schools quickly and efficiently came together to form a COVID-nineteen task force to make important decisions and recommendations to the Board of Education, updated our website and added a live tracker for COVID-nineteen updates, partnered with the Educational Service Center to provide vaccinations to all employees, installed thermal imaging technology. Our district has successfully created community partnerships to enhance our students' growth, including our partnership with the Cleveland Brown Stay in the Game Program, breathing life back into Garfield Heights Alumni Association Education Foundation, hosting commencement at Rocket Mortgage Field House, constructing and opening a new transportation facility, partnering with the United Methodist Church to help advance our positive behavior intervention supports programming, continuing our partnership with Marymount Hospitals Helping Hands Committee for back-to-school needs and the Hygiene Clinic, continuing our partnership with Kiwanis, which has led to the donation of academic resources such as dictionaries and holding the K-Club groups at each building. It's truly amazing as we look back at these accomplishments. I believe that fulfillment of our vision is within our reach, and that vision is to become a premier educational institution, which will be recognized throughout Ohio as fully preparing students to be leaders equipped with real-world skills to contribute to a global society. Thank you for choosing Garfield, for being loyal supporters of our district, and for showing your Bulldog pride. And always remember, go Bulldogs!
Thank you, President Daniels. I thought that would be good to share, good to look back. And also it highlights a lot of our staff. I'd like to thank, if you didn't notice, Mr. LePelle, his voice over there. He did a great job. If you don't mind, President Daniels, we can go right. Thank you, Madam President. I would like to thank Ms. Frimmo and Mr. Glazer and the staff members and students who helped prepare to host our meetings Monday. It's great to be back in the building so that we can remain accessible to the community and partisan with the greatest strides being made throughout our district. In consultation with our building principals, I commend the staff and the students for completing the annual pre-testing award in the classrooms and analyzing the benchmark data to prepare for the upcoming test-taking season. In addition, while the daily new degrees in temperatures, maybe outside temperatures, we have to say that down during COVID. Seeing more and more frequent, we're still in the winter weather season, and we ask that parents prepare their students for success by dressing them appropriately for outdoor conditions. As the weather continues to break, students will go outside on recess. If you are in gloves, hats, boots, scarves, or jackets, the district can help you through the generosity of others. Please sit your way in office. I also echo the request of our building principals for parents, please engage your students about their academics. Check progress book, inquire about your son or daughter's school day. Read with your children, they're involved in this key to our success. I'm proud of the efforts of our school staff who have done a great job in celebrating Black History Month and seeing some of the live demonstrations such as African-Dominical drumming, knowledge being done to prepare for this Thursday's Jupiter Dance Experience. The diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts are truly spectacular at Garfield High City Schools. We value the accomplishments and influence of Black Americans and our everyday lives during this fun at Garfield High City Schools to showcase to affirm just that. I want to congratulate the Board of Education on beginning the boardroom editor, Mark Friend and Howie, and Billy Robert A. Yoby, senior. He was a true public servant, whether he was helping to organize the city's youth rent programs or serving as a liaison with the city and school district. Bob always had a way to keep the kids first. It was a special ceremony that took place last week as he doo-dooed, did a great job of sharing remarks before his extended family and past friends. Thank you to the board for ensuring that Bob's public service will be remembered forever. Finally, the Garfield High City Schools is celebrating Public Schools Week during this week. And the district is a way to honor our nation's commitment to public education and the exemplary work of educators during such extraordinary times. Our public schools work hard to create safe, equitable, and engaging school environment where student learning, wellbeing, and individual educational needs can be met and affirmed. In addition to learning, public schools provide opportunities for safe physical, emotional, and intellectual development. And all public schools account for the education of nine out of every ten students in our nation. Approximately fifty-one million students total, along with three-point-two million educators. Let's join together and celebrate Public Schools Week. Thank you, Madam President, and thank you for your report.
Thank you, Ms. Frimmo. Is there any question for the state to submit?
With there being enough questions, I would like to see Mr. Reed's piece report this evening. Can I have a motion? Can I have a motion to approve more financial recourse for game career in twenty-twenty-two?
I'll speak to you. Mr. Sullivan, can I have a? Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, can I have a motion to approve the board financial reports? If I have a second? Is there any discussion? Is there anything you wanted to share about this report this evening, Mr. Daniels?
The only thing that I shared is the financial committee is that we received our fair school funding plan, our new formula amounts under the fair school funding plan, and I'm going to have a, uh, a few adjustments as we move forward as the whole category is saying that that's the page that changed mentally. So I want to be able to reconcile eventually to the new, um, money formula amounts. And then, uh, so you'll see some adjustments coming in February to those amounts. And also the first thing with the catch-up, so there's a, an extraordinary large payment this month, maybe unrestricted or restricted. So you'll see that table back in February, February fourth. Right, you then, that we had those catch-ups. It took them six months to get it up there, stuff together, and it's not all done yet. Say until E, and I don't think they're done yet, but take great some of those names. I know one of them is a grant patient. So we're still waiting for, uh, hopefully, um, they bring it, not a major change.
Is that major change going to be a benefit to the district or is that?
Uh, just going to be a change in presentation. A lot of our state funding got re-corrected, that's by, uh, restricted. And what that means is when it goes from unrestricted to restricted, there are now strings attached. And I fear that the end of this fiscal year that we're going to have to report on how we use those funds. And there's going to be some requirements I'm never going to be needing to follow. I think we're following them now. I don't know what all the restrictions are. Soon as I have those, I'll be able to more tailor our expenditure to those restrictions. And we need the requirements of all of you.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Is there any other questions? If there's no other questions, Mr. Sullivan, that was moved by Mr. Juppie, the second, at this time, is.
Juppie?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas? Ms. Cade?
Yes.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
At this time, do you have a motion for moving very, very forward? Is there a second to move away from IIs twelve through twenty? Is there any discussion about moving to IIs twelve through twenty? If there's no discussion, Mr. Sullivan, that, the motion for IIs twelve through twenty and the waiver of reading IIs twelve through twenty was made by Mr. Juppie. And that is second, Ms. Morrison, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Juppie?
Yes.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Ms. Cady?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Ms. Daniels?
Yes. Mr. Sullivan, do we have any remarks on the public regarding this line of new school license this evening?
No one has signed up.
Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan. At this time, can I have a motion to influence the executive session as of seven oh four P M for the purposes of discussing personnel matters?
Seven.
Mr. Sullivan, that was moved by Mr. Juppie, the second, Ms. Cade, can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Juppie?
Yes.
Ms. Cade?
Yes.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Daniels?
Yes. At this time, the Board of Education is not able to attend to the executive session as of seven oh four P M for the purposes of discussing.